It's two o'clock.
Roll call.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton. Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you and good afternoon. We are not shut down. We are here, we are working. I actually received a few emails which was comical about why aren't you at work and why wasn't there a meeting this week? I guess they forgot about the holidays that we observe, not to mention all the hard work that goes into these meetings. So, I know the kids have enjoyed a few inclement weather days and speaking of inclement weather, that's what we have upon us now. So, as you walk up and down your block trying to define your trash can or your recycle bin and you give your neighbors back theirs, if you see something that looks out of place, maybe a bunch of newspapers stacked up, keep in mind, this is a time of year where you really have to look after the elderly, the disabled, those who are in need because when it gets this cold, even if you have a working furnace in your house, I promise you, it's tough to keep up. So, do that as citizens of Omaha and we'll continue to take care of each other. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today. Now, as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Before we begin the major part of our agenda today, I think there's a celebration that is in order and I would like for Dr. Franklin Thompson to come to the podium and announce the winners of the Martin Luther King Essay Contest that the Human Rights and Relations Department held. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. I'd like to stand on behalf of the first annual Living the Dream Contest that took place on the 21st down at the Holland Theater. We had 700 people in attendance and then we had, not essays per se, but we had vocal music, instrumental music, the spoken word, and then we had interpretive dance. And I'd like to let you know just a little bit of history. I won't take too much time, but we wanted young people to get involved a little bit more with government and we felt from the HRR department that the city should take a role in the citizenship education of kids. Too often, we put all the burden on the schools to do the changing and so we felt, I talked to Ben and I talked to the mayor, and we thought it would be a good idea to have the city play a part in citizenship education. So, we chose Martin Luther King Day and we asked the students to go out and do things that, and write and compose things that made a difference. In my hand, I'll pass it out to the clerk, are the results of who won. Hand it to you right now, are the individuals who won. But in addition to that, we had a school competition today. We want to award the school competition. Before I do, there were three strands or three themes that night, one being Martin Luther King's message, the message of living together, working together, looking beyond color, looking beyond nationality, religion, sexual orientation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Look beyond those things and treat the person for who they are. So, that was theme number one. Theme number two is that things are broken and things need to be fixed. And on that theme, there were some critiques and there were critiques about like police brutality and things like that and I think one group even critiqued the president. And so, that was a line of thought of, we still need to get better. And then the, of the third line of thought, our theme, was things that young people have to deal with such as bullying, maybe not feeling that the country listens to them, and even things like teen suicide. And so, we took all three themes and we let the kids express themselves and then there was first, second in place winners in spoken word of getting rid of racism, spoken word in terms of what we call hashtag be kind and brave, and then open categories for vocal music, instrumental music, and interpretive dance. And then, we decided to have an index score for the school that showed the most promise in terms of preparing their kids for this. All the schools were not the same. Some schools are stronger than others and we gave points for the amount of students from that school that participated and then we graded them on a one, two, or a three in terms of the strength of their message and their performance. And then also, we gave a score to the school itself in terms of how open they were, how they allowed us to interact with the kids. Some schools were more open than others. And so, we came up with a score and the fourth place school in the whole city was Miller North and then the third place was West Side. Second place was South High. But the trophy that you see right here and the title on the trophy is the Martin Luther King Junior Social Justice High School of the Year Award. This is a traveling trophy that hopefully goes from school to school each year, but the first year will be awarded to, ladies and gentlemen, bless, let's award and congratulate Central High School. If I could get Central to come up. Willa Rauk was the first place in vocalists and so I'll let her introduce everybody.
Hi, I'm Willa Rauk. As said, this is Cecilia Huber. She can introduce herself. You know, I won't say their names, they can say them.
Hi, I'm Cecilia Huber and I got first place in poetry for eracism.
Hi, my name is Naomi Week and I got third for the hashtag be kind and brave in poetry.
She spoke on disabilities.
Hi, my name is Maru Simbaro. I'm from Central.
I did vocal music, she did vocal, they both did poetry. I wrote a song about gun control and the importance that that has to students these days, especially at Central. Last year, we had a walkout that was on the basis of gun control and that really inspired me. And I think that everybody here had experiences in their school and around that told them that we need to speak out, that we need to write and we need to talk about the things that we've witnessed, the things that we've seen, and open up about the kind of stuff that goes on that a lot of people don't see.
Would a teacher or staff person like to say anything?
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Dr. Ed Bennett, principal at Central High School and I could not be more proud of the young people that we serve every day. They are creative, they are energetic, and they make me so excited about the next generations of leadership of Omaha. So, we thank you and we hope, Dr. Thompson, if you don't mind, hopefully we'll hang on to that for a few more years, but we'll see how it goes.
Congratulations.
Dr. Bennett, some of your colleagues have already told me that they tell you, don't get too used to it. They're coming for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Lakeview 168 along with waiver of section 5399 sidewalks for only the west side of HWS Cleveland Boulevard. Located southwest of 168th and Ida Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval with a waiver of section 5399 sidewalks.
Public hearing and agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
President, members of the council, my name is Mark Johnson. My address is 11440 West Center Road. I'm appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Celebrity Homes. With me today is John Coolidge from Lampard Neersen and Associates. The request before you today is for the approval of the preliminary plat for Lakeview 168. The property in question is approximately 80 acres in size and is located on the southwest corner of 168th and Ida Street, as you can see from this Google image here. It's the roughly hashed out, which maybe won't come through, but hopefully does. Flanagan Lake is this brown piece there, so that obviously is an old image, but that's where Flanagan Lake will be located. The preliminary plat is 100, consists of 256 single-family lots and this will be kind of an odd orientation, but there'll be two phases. The first phase will consist of 126 lots, which I guess if we orientate this, this is north, this is south. It'll be these 126 lots and the second phase will consist of the northern 130 lots. I'd just like to add that we appreciate all the efforts of the Planning and Public Work Departments to date in connection with this project and we look forward to continuing to work with them in the comments as we submit our final plat. With that, we have your answer to any questions.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item six, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Festerson. Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items seven to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for Wood Valley West Two located north of Military Road and west of 147th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Wood Valley West Two. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Wood Valley West Two subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and agenda items number seven through nine are today. Proponents, please.
Still Mark Johnson, 11440 West Center Road and Mr. Coolidge is still here. Again, represents Celebrity Homes in connection with the request for the approval of the final plat and subdivision agreement and the related rezoning of the property from AG to R4. This property is approximately 22 acres in size and it's generally located north of Military Road, which is right here, and 147th Street is just southwest of 144th and State. As you can see, actually this piece has since been platted and is currently being developed. So, this kind of fills in a gap of residential development out there. It's 96 single-family lots with four outlots. The, we believe the flannel plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved by this council on August 28th of 2018 and we believe we've addressed all the conditions outlined in the recommendation report. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items seven through nine, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items seven through nine are approved, seven to zero. Items 10 to 12 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Backwoods Paradise located at 9140 Mormon Bridge Road. Planning, or item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Backwoods Paradise. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval of the preliminary plat but denial of a waiver of section 5399 sidewalks. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat for Backwoods Paradise. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, a resolution to approve the Backwoods Paradise subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and agenda items numbers 10 through 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Joe Detlef's with Thompson, Druison, and Dornar, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here representing the applicant and to answering any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 10 through 12 and there's one light, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions for you, Joe. This is in my district and about Mormon Bridge Road and McKinley. I didn't have any questions previously until today, but we did just get an email here that I wanted to just engage you on, on behalf of this constituent, Ms. Fountain, who lives in the Raven Oaks neighborhood near the project. I think she was having trouble getting information about it, so I just wanted to engage you on what this does. It essentially divides, subdivides a lot into two properties for two residential homes, correct?
Correct.
And it is in a somewhat sensitive part of the neighborhood and it's heavily treed and such, but it's a little bit off the road in terms of being just west of Mormon Bridge Road, correct?
Yes.
Looks like it requires installation of sidewalks and things. Where will those sidewalks be?
The sidewalks, we're requesting a waiver on the sidewalks and we're not going to protest a future sidewalk improvement district should one come in at a later time. So, at the moment, there, we're not proposing any sidewalks.
And the two outlots in the photo there, what's currently there along the road?
So, here's our two lots.
Mm-hmm. Kind of a triangle looking areas there?
Oh, I believe that's just wooded areas.
Okay. So, just kind of shielded from the road and all be back tucked back inside?
Correct.
Where's the access to the property?
Access to this property will be right here and then the access to this property will be along the top there.
Is that a, is that a new? Go ahead.
There'll be an easement along there, an access easement.
And so, a new road built right there?
Yeah, it'd probably be like a gravel road or...
Okay. And as the other access point, is that currently there or is that a new access point?
That'll be a new access point.
Okay, like a driveway basically?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, I just wanted to kind of clarify that for these questions I received and I think there's a motion in a second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 12 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 to 18 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Somerset Two located southeast of Winninghoff Road and State Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13 in ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R4 District. Item 14 in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Items 15 and 16 are resolutions to approve the final plats for Somerset Two. Items 17 and 18 are resolutions to approve the Somerset Two subdivision agreements.
Public hearing and agenda items numbers 13 through 18 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mark Johnson, again, 11440 West Center Road. Appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Celebrity Homes. The request before you is two separate final plats along with the accompanying subdivision agreements and a rezoning of the entire property from AG to R4. This property is located just inside the 680 Loop, southeast of Winninghoff Road and State Street, as you could see here. The first plat is relatively straightforward. It's just 100 single-family lots and that, they're all fit in there. And then the second plat is 106 single-family lots right in there. One thing to note, as part of the second plat subdivision agreement does require that the district makes some improvements to State Street here, so those improvements will be made as part of that development. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 13 through 18, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 through 18 are approved, seven to zero. Items 19 to 23 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Pacific Reserve located at 20601 Pacific Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 19 in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item 20 in ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R5 District. Item 21, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow daycare service in an R5 District. Item 22, a resolution to approve the final plat for Pacific Reserve. Item 23, a resolution to approve the Pacific Reserve subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and agenda items numbers 19 through 23 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mark Johnson. This is the last of me that you'll see today. 11440 West Center Road. Appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Pacific Reserve. With me today are Eric Williams from Olson, Chris Erickson from City Ventures, Alyssa Garth from Kitty Academy of Elkhorn, and Greg Blackwell from the corporate offices of Kitty Academy. The approvals, the request for you today are the approval of the final plat for Pacific Reserve along with the rezoning of the property. As you can see here, it's just to the west of 204th and Pacific Street, just east of the elementary school out there. And the approval of a special use permit for Lot 5. Today, the property consists of nine acres of undeveloped property, but the plat would subdivide that into five buildable lots, four of which will be residential and one of which will be, again, they're all zoned R5, but it'll, the special use permit would allow a daycare services to be conducted on that Lot 5. Lot 5 consists of about a little under two acres of property, about 1.96 acres. I'll show you a little site plan here. The proposal is to construct a building approximately 14,400 square feet in size, which will serve 230, up to 230 children ages six weeks to 12 years old, about 25 teachers and 15 support staff. There'll be an outdoor play area at the rear of the property. I'll show you a little quick elevation. Plans look like for the facility. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve 19 through 23, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 19 through 23 are approved, seven to zero. Item 24 in ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district, the property located at 1938 North 85th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to engage the planning department real quickly on this one since I don't see the applicant here, but I know this has been a long time challenge at this corner, 85th and Blondo. It's a Mediterranean grocery store. They've been to the council probably five times on this. It looks like they've started over with this application and done it correctly through planning board and now through city council, which I believe brings the building to front, Blondo Street, parking in front and parking to the west and satisfies the access concerns that the public works department had. Is that an accurate assessment, Mr. Fanslaw or Mr. Stube?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, that is accurate, yes.
I think I had a unanimous approval through planning board, so I'm thankful that this has worked out and I want to thank the applicant and the owner of the store, if they're watching today, for their persistence in getting this done because it is a viable business there that the neighborhood appreciates. With that, I'd motion approve.
Moved and seconded to approve item 24, no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And 24 is approved, seven to zero. And if there's no objection, has been requested to move item 25 to after item 28. Item 26 in ordinance to rezone property located at 1903 South 13th Street from GI District to MBD District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 26 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name's Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 26, there are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo stepped out. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, six to zero. Item 27, a resolution to approve a special use permit for Children's Hospital and Medical Center for a Helport in a CC district located at 8501 West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and agenda item number 27 is today. Proponents, please. Proponents, please.
Yes, Tim Jacoby, 8200 Dodge Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68114. And I represent the hospital.
Thank you. And just here to answer any questions.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 27. There are no lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 28, a resolution to approve the Amesworth and Beverly Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 2230 and 2236 Jones Street, an amount up to $285,000. A is communications and opposition.
The public hearing was held a couple of weeks ago. This is council discussion. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, it's my understanding there are some council members that have some new images that they want to show, and that's fine. What I think, I sense is going on in this is that with TIF applications, particularly those that are to restore historic buildings, I would prefer that there be, that be a positive thing, that we're all unified behind as a good thing for our city, particularly redevelopment in the urban core. But I don't see, from what I'm seeing since the last hearing and what I'm hearing today, that we were there on this particular application. So I think the goal, whether it be renovating and restoring historic structures, using TIF to do that, or through code violations, is to improve the housing conditions for those that are living in those units, dwellings. And I don't think that it's right today, knowing that what we have seen and are about to see, that it would be right to approve this today. I think that what we need to do is, if we could, have Mr. Lane from the city's Code Enforcement Division work with Mr. Palladino, the applicant, between now and April 2, when I'm going to propose this be laid over to, to allow Mr. Palladino the opportunity to address these and correct these, actually abate these code violations, so that when this application comes back before us, he's been given the opportunity to address the conditions that have been raised and we're about to see, and that this can be something that we as a group in the community can be excited about and not have such hurt and wounded feelings about doing this that so many people who've come before us and are about to see again today have expressed. So I would be moving to lay over items 28 and 25 to April 2, 2019, because I think that Mr. Palladino is going to need some time to make repairs and restorations so that Mr. Lane can report back to us on what he's done. I see Mr. Lane nodding his head back there. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that motion. I was preparing to vote no today, so I hope that...
I hope that the applicant takes it seriously and takes giving it, because I, although I'm going to go along with the layover, Councilman Jerem, in hopes that some of the issues that are currently pending get resolved. I, I'm going to second...
I'll discuss that in a bit.
I'm going to second the layover, but my, if it doesn't get voted, my vote today is going to be no.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Harding. I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson. I'm sorry, you're first.
Well, thanks, Mr. ... Appreciate it. I'll yield my time back when I'm done. Thanks, Mr. President. So I understand that line of thinking and we'll see how this goes, but I think today I'm prepared to vote no also on this. I think we discussed this a few weeks ago, and it was my question actually to the city attorney about can or should or could a applicant's track history be considered when applying for TIF? Or does the TIF committee ever could think about that in terms of their analysis of what is eligible for TIF funding from the city? And the initial response was no. Not only do they not think about that, the initial impression was under community development law, that's not something they can consider. To my colleagues' credit, Councilman Gray submitted a formal request for an opinion on that, to do some more research and to have a more definitive response for us. And that has come back. And in that response, the city attorney believes we do have the ability to consider that track record and, and the record of having insanitary or unsafe dwellings when applying for additional projects that may or may not be related to those certain areas. So I believe we do have the flexibility today to do either an up or down vote, or a third option would be to, to delay in hopes of getting things corrected. I had some mixed feelings about this. I know I was in Florence last night with the applicant, and I appreciated what we were talking about there with the neighborhood, which was a storage facility that I think I would just assume go away, and I think they would too. But there was a constructive dialogue and a willingness to work with the neighborhood that I appreciated there. But then I'm not sure how I can square that with what I've seen in my district in the just last couple of weeks at 52nd Northwest Radio. Totally unacceptable conditions there. No landlord should think that's okay. And that's a property also owned by this applicant. So I just can't reconcile that today in terms of allowing this to go forward. I do support TIF in general. I do support renovating older buildings for housing. We need more of that in the city. But on this particular case, and until I see, I guess, evidence of things changing and changing quickly, I'm not supportive of doing this today. I would also add, we had, had a conversation this morning about realizing this is an ability we have, a lens we can, we can have in terms of our analysis of TIF applications, that we had conversation about bringing that matter as a policy matter back to the city council's planning committee to develop some guidelines around that, work with the department in terms of how that would work going forward, because that can be complicated with various different applicants or LLCs or what have you. So I, I think we're all willing to engage in that work too, but for this particular item today here, I'm a no.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, I shouldn't have yielded my time to. Took, took some of the things I was going to say. But I think it's important, and as was pointed out, initially we were told that we could not use criteria of past experiences or demonstrated projects as something to make a decision or base a decision on, now that the Law Department has told us that. I think, and I, and there's, there's much more that needs to be hashed out. And you just alluded a little bit to that at the end of your comments, Pete, with, you know, many of these times, these are through an LLC, a single purpose entity that's been created for a certain project. You could have different partnerships, different ownerships, different percentages of ownerships. It might be some similar relationships between corporations or LLCs, but I think those, those are things that could be hashed out and made part of a policy that I think the, that the, the city's TIF committee is where the, the process would start, and then on to Planning Board before it comes here. I think those should be built into the process. I'm not trying to abdicate our responsibility as a final, maybe the, to make that final decision, but I think that that should be set up from the outset. In this case, or at least for this application, it was not. But by the same token, if, if the Law Department says we have that authority, I, I had not considered the, the layover, Mr. Jerem, but I, I think that's something that maybe I would consider, because I was, I too was prepared to vote no today. But when that comes around, I'll, I'll see about the layover.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some words to say on this. I must be honest with you. You know, sometimes the people who live in my part of the city think we are immune to this. I found out we are not. This issue is not just in certain parts of the city. It's throughout the city. I went by a building, I thought, oh, this is a nice building. And hell, I started getting complaints about it. I think we need to send, send a message, say enough is enough. If I vote today, it would be a no. I'm willing to listen to your proposal, but it's time that we probably stand up and say, this is life. Get with it. You're businessmen and women. You know what's right and what's wrong. So as I, as I said, if we vote today, it will be a no. If we, if you can convince me to put it off for three days. But something has to happen. Something has to happen. If not at this level, it will happen at the state level, because we know there are people down there who think they ought to take over charge of what the city is responsible for, which I do not believe in. I think it's, the local government should be making those decisions. So I am a little leery of my fellow former peers in the legislature may want to take on this responsibility. And once we lose that, needless to say, I don't think it'd be good for anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll weigh in briefly too on this. It sounds like from what we've heard from my colleagues is it's probably better off we do lay this over, otherwise we know what the outcome is. I am a little torn on it, because when you see the city and you know the, the need for that urban core, and when you have somebody who's willing to invest in that urban core, which these are historic buildings, and we've heard a lot about that recently in the news, how we need to save them, one part of me applauds that. But the other part of me knows the other situation that's going on. So I, I too would be a no vote, but it still doesn't mean in the back of my head I don't want people to come forward and invest in the part of the city in which we need it the most. And we see that difference happening. So that's where I would stand on that today. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do have a couple, I do have several comments that I want to make. First of all, I, I do have concerns about the layover, even though I'm, I'm willing to listen to some discussion about that. My concern about the layover is this. Mr. Lane, could you come down for a second, please? Identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Scott Lane, City Planning.
Scott, last week, we had an opportunity, I and others had an opportunity to go visit some of his properties over on Northwest Radio. Let me just say categorically, I don't believe you can fix that. I don't believe there's anything that the city can do to fix that. I don't believe there's anything he can do to fix it. I believe it's so, and, 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 and Mr. Jerem mentioned some, some video and some pictures. I decided, because some of you had just recently had lunch, I don't want you to see some of these pictures, because they are horrible. There is mouse droppings so much under the kitchen sink of one of these buildings that you can barely see the floor. The roaches that I'm, that I, the roaches that you normally see, they will come out when you turn the light on. They'll scatter and so forth. These roaches didn't budge, didn't move. And there were colonies and colonies and colonies of them. And people can smile and all of that if you want to, but this is really serious with me. I'm not convinced that he can get this fixed. But I do want to, I do want to say, I called you down, Mr. Lane, because last week, he was, there was black mold on the wall from the floor to the ceiling in one of the bedrooms. What did you ask him to do?
He was asked actually by one of our investigators...
Not to paint that wall.
Correct. To, to remove the drywall, repair the leak behind it, and then replace it with new drywall.
And what did he do?
He didn't, but a staff member immediately after leaving our, him leaving our office initiated painting.
Painted over it.
With kills.
See, that's my problem here. My problem is, you will tell him something to do, and then it won't get done, or they'll do it in a way that they want to do it. That's the most cheap way to do it for them. Those, there is so much, there are so many, so many rat, mice. There were 10 holes that I counted just in the kitchen sink area alone. The repair work that needs to be done in the kitchen and the bathroom is unbelievably bad. And to assume that you're going to repair some of this damage in the space of three or four months, I'm not, I don't think you can get, I'm, I know you can't get it done. But more important than what we talked about in the properties that are in Mr. Festerson's district, and trust me, there are properties like this in every single council member's district. And so with me, I have the concern about whether or not this is really going to get done, number one. And number two, he has already, on at least two occasions that I'm aware of, said one thing. You can sit down, Mr. Lane. I just wanted that question from you. He's done, where permits and where code enforcement is asking to do one thing, and he's done exactly the opposite of what they told him to do. So for me, I mean, if we're going to vote on the layover, it, it'll come down to, you know, when it gets to my name as to whether I'm going to vote up or down or not, or whether I'm going to vote for the layover or not. Right now, I just don't see a layover being a solution to this, because I don't believe, quite frankly, that he can get it done. More importantly, there are significant numbers of other properties that this individual owns that are in completely substandard conditions. A number of them are in my district. So for me, I'd be supportive of listening to a layover, but whether I'm going, and I normally, almost always, vote with my council members when someone asks for a layover. But having seen the video and the pictures, and having witnessed and talked to those people, and here's the other thing that bothers me. There are, many of these people are from other countries, Sudanese, Burmese. But many of those people, a good number of the people that live in these properties are indigenous to this community, white people and black people. And all of them are deathly afraid that we as a council or the mayor's office or whoever, we're going to pull another Yale Park and, and, and move them from their properties. These are people with literally nothing. And, but what little nothing they have, they want to hold on to. And they don't want to be displaced. And we don't have enough, not nearly enough, affordable housing in this community. So for me, I have to see how things go right now, but my, I don't see any way that I could support this, but I'd be willing to listen. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Mr. Palladino, could you come down here? I have a couple of questions I wanted to ask you.
David J. Palladino. D.A.V.E.P.A.L.A.D.I.N.O. 2702 Douglas.
The, the application, this TIF application was made under Anderson Apartments LLC. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Could you tell me the ownership of Anderson Apartments LLC?
I'm the only owner.
Hundred percent owner.
Hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay. And you also, as part of the application, I believe, proposed that you would be the management team of the property as well. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerem.
Mr. Palladino, if you could not, just if you could have a seat, just in case I want to call you up. Yeah, I'm a firm believer, having, you know, this other job and hat I wear is as an attorney, and it occasionally takes me over to the courthouse. And those are both for civil cases and criminal cases. And if something happens when you have a client on the criminal side who has been either given a diversion type sentence or a probation sentence with conditions, they either put up and, and prove that they are worthy of the, of the second chance that they've been given, or in some cases, with some judges that have show cause hearings waiting for them at various times along their probation, they have to appear and show cause why they shouldn't have their probation revoked. So I'm a firm believer that when you have, because I've seen it work for 27 years now, if you have someone in the system that has incentive and reason to reform their behavior, that you, you, it is far more likely that you will achieve that reformation in, in how they're conducting themselves. And so if we are truly, as a city, trying to restore the condition of our housing units and, and reduce the number of code violations and restore historic buildings, when you have someone who's bringing themselves into that system, who wants that carrot and that reward, we have incredible leverage over that person to keep them in the system, to have them account to us. If we, if we, because of the, of the, the need for the vengeance to say, you're a bad actor, and we're going to punish you here today, that's certainly the prerogative of the council, as we've learned, that we can do on this TIF app. But to me, we would be far better off keeping Mr. Palladino and his company in the system, under our watch, working with Mr. Lane. Having Mr. Lane report back to us between now and when we vote on this again on April 2, if this layover passes, he could come back in, in February, and he could report on February 26. That may be Presidents. No, that's the next week. So we would meet. He could come back on March 19th and report again as to how he's doing. And you'll know very clearly whether this second chance has worked or not. But to say no, what it does is, it, it ensures that the condition of these two buildings on Jones will continue to deteriorate. It, it, it's likely not to result in any speedy resolution of code conditions, because those who are ticketed after a period of time of noncompliance in the code enforcement side, they go over to the, when they're ticketed, they go over and the judges give them month after month after month. We, how many stories have we heard from, from those who've come before us complaining about that? So if we really want to try to do something, I think we're better off doing it this route. But, you know, as I've said, I agree with everyone else that if we vote today, this is, on the application, straight up, it's a down vote. But why not give this person a chance? Why not use the leverage that we have and a cooperative employee in the Planning Department to, to do that? So that's, that's the case for the layover. And I respect my colleagues that don't see it that way. And, but I would say, as one final anecdote, that Councilmember Gray and I have on another front, seen the need, and plan on getting a conversation started on the rental registry ordinance. And we've, request a law, went up today. Well, if it hasn't, it will be today. And whether that, in fact, proposal of an ordinance in its form, which is to be modeled after La Vista, is what in fact, in form crosses the finish line, remains to be seen. Probably knowing the process and how this works to gain community consensus with, with feedback from colleagues and the departments and the mayor and the citizenry, it, it may look like something else and probably will in fact do that. And Mr. Festerson's been working hard with Mr. Harding and, and, and Mr. Paul and the Planning Department to try to come up with some kind of consensus. But we felt like it's time to, to move that thing along. Or we could be debating that particular thing for a long time. So make no mistake, that conversation will be, be happening soon for those of you who view that as a part of this. But that's my, my thoughts on why this motion to lay over with this application should, should pass today. And if we don't, I respect that in the votes, and it'll clearly be voted down today. But I think we're far better off doing the other way.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too would like to honor the, the layover as possible, if possible, but I guess I'm not clear on, if we lay it over, what is it for? What, what's on the record that needs to be fixed? What, is there a prop, is there a list of property addresses?[1696.29] What, is there a prop, is there a list of property addresses? Or how are we going to address that when Mr. Palladino comes back before us, that we sit here and we say, hey, yes, you did what we wanted you to do, and now we're here, so, you know, we'll, we'll take a vote then? But I guess I'm just not clear on what we're asking him to do with that time that we're possibly going to give him.
And I apologize if I wasn't clear. The thought was, is that Mr. Lane inventories the code enforcement violations, and he, he provides them to us and then reports back, as I said, on those dates between now and April 2, when this, if it passes, the layover would come back for vote. So we would know, A, upfront, where are the violations, what they are, and we will know on a monthly basis from Mr. Lane what the progress is on eliminating those violations.
Let, let me just say here, and I, Mr. Jerome, I, I understand what you're saying, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, and, and I'm really taking it under advisement. I haven't decided what my vote is going to be yet, but here's my other problem. My other problem is, this man owns about 1,000 properties, 2,000 properties. This man owns 2,000 properties. I would bet, I, I know the ones in my district. I know most of the ones in my district. I know they're all substandard. Where do we start? That, that's my concern. Where do we, if we're just going to do the Northwest Radio Apartments and then have him come back, then what happens with the other people who are suffering on 48th Street, Ames, Taylor, and Boyd, for example? What's going to happen with the old Drake Court Apartments that exist in your district, Mr. Jerome? What are we going to do about all of those properties that this individual owns that are clearly, without hesitation, substant, subs, they're in substantial violation, substantial code violation? How are we going to address those 2,000 properties, many of which have really gone downhill very quickly, and people are even afraid, they're afraid of this man, they're afraid of this council, they're afraid of this mayor, and they're afraid of different people because, Mr. Mr. Storey, this is not a public hearing, so you need to sit down. The fact of the matter is, is that we need to address all of these properties in their totality and not just focus on Northwest Radio. Now, if there needs to be someone that files a complaint, I'll gladly go to these properties and file the complaints myself. But the fact of the matter is, we've got nearly 2,000 properties, many of them need to be addressed in some fashion. I would be okay if we had some sort of idea as to how we were going to address the overall picture, but if we're just talking about Northwest Radio, that, that wouldn't be good enough for me.
Well, as I've said, you know, we have to use the rules of engagement that, that the city has as far as our laws. We are a complaint-driven system, and if there are complaints that have been inspected that are in the queue in the planning department, they're not limited to any one property.
Okay.
There are those who are in queue. I mean, if there are other people with complaints and the city inspects and confirms the violations, that's how the process works. And as a lawyer, it, it, it makes sense to me as well, because we can only deal with facts and evidence, and the evidence is, someone makes a complaint, sometimes they're verified through the inspection process, most times they are, in fact, sometimes they're not. But that's what we have to go off of, as the current rules of engagement, as I see it.
Okay. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. I was just going to say, I, I was considering the, the layover to Mr., after Mr. Jerome brought it up, but I, I guess the more I think about it, I, we already have him in the system, and there's nothing that, if we deny this today, there's nothing that says that he can't come back at a later point in time and make a similar TIF application for that property. I'm not sure that laying it over until April, I mean, it, he can, he can certainly, he can still demonstrate that he's making his best faith efforts on other properties, and we can use that as, as criteria when we're considering an application at that point. But I, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and I, I totally agree with you. I think all people need a second chance. I think we talked about a developer earlier today that, that probably didn't have the best track record before, but is, is now highly regarded in, in his industry and, and puts out a good product. So I think, I, I appreciate the, the carrot and, and stick analogy. I think it's something that I considered, but I, I, again, I, I think, I think having the ability to come back after proven that results are being made is, is a time when we could consider a, a application, or a TIF application for that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Palermo, did you have, do you have a light on? I'm sorry, because I may have, go ahead, Mr. Palmer, you were first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lane, if you could come down, please. Sorry for the long journey, but on your way down, I want to ask Mr. Fanslaw a question, if I could, please. Dave.
I'm here.
Okay, sorry. Hey, last week, I had asked you about this particular address, and maybe you remember, maybe you don't. If there were any other developers or people to, willing to take the risk to apply for TIF on this property and, and, and make a project of it, could you answer if there had been others, yes or no?
On the particular site that we're talking about today?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you. So, and I agree with Councilman Jerome 100% where we need people to step forward and do this. And, and this is the part I'm torn on, because when I ask, what are we going to request of Mr. Palladino moving forward, I guess the first thing I think of is, I wanted to ask you, Mr. Lane, how many ongoing issues do, are, are in the system for this particular applicant?
Scott Lane, City Planning. As, as it currently stands, I think I was asked this two weeks ago at the last meeting, there was seven at that time that he was in violation. I think all but one have been remedied. We recently have gotten three, maybe four, over at Northwest Radio. I've had contacts today about another complex, I can't remember exactly where, maybe Burke Street, where we're going to be getting additional complaints on a property owned by Mr. Palladino. I don't have those, so as of right now, we only have like three or four active cases. But Mr. Gray is right, I've witnessed the photographs.
Sure. So that, it would be easily attainable for Mr. Palladino to fix the problems that we have in the system to move forward, because that's what I was worried about when we talked about April, and if you have thousands of properties, and this is what I spoke about before, too, where you have so many properties, you're going to get complaints. And if we're on a complaint-based system, and you only have that many in the system, and you're saying almost all of them have been fixed, where's the, where's the stop-go that we say, okay, from this point on, here's what you have to fix before you come before us in April for this TIF app? Or do we just keep compounding them, and, and they may never end with 1,000 units? So it's really tough on this one, but that answers my question, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I, I appreciate Councilman Jerome's logic, and there is logic to what he's saying and his analysis of keeping someone in the system to encourage them to do the right thing and what those rules of engagement are. But for me, the rules of engagement should be, the expectation is, this is basic code enforcement, all landlords should be in compliance with. There shouldn't have to be a stick and a carrot on a larger project to get something like this accomplished. I've seen the pictures, too. I've been to this particular location. It's an embarrassment. There's been three families relocated, I should say evacuated, in the last week to make these corrections. I think there's probably many more families in that complex. It could be the same way, and probably will be the same way. There's no way these things get corrected in a satisfactory manner before April 2nd. So part of my analysis is, I don't think anything has, will change substantially between now and a layover on this particular item, at least not in my district. I think there's more of these to come, so I, I'm just not comfortable with the layover today, even though I, I do appreciate advocacy for a project that I would like to see happen in Councilman Jerome's district in terms of that renovation. But I think to Councilman Harding's point, should these things get resolved in the next couple of weeks, or next couple of months, or next couple of years, a TIF application could be renewed and reapplied for, but I just don't see it happening today, and I know it hasn't been satisfactory resolved in my district at the moment, and it won't be before April 2nd, I'm quite confident. I think Councilman Gray shares that pers, shares that perspective, actually having been there and toured the facility. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there, and it's, shouldn't be satisfactory to anybody what's happened there and how those families have been treated.
It's been moved and seconded to layover until April 2nd. Roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
No.
Harding.
No.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion is passed, 4 to 3.
I hope that we're going to do something specific, though, to have him work at not just the properties on Northwest Radio, but all the other properties that he owns as well. Madam Clurtt.
And just to clarify, that was to postpone items 28 and 25.
Yeah, 25 and 28, to postpone till April 2nd.
Yes. Item 29, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for the Bell Air banquet room located at 12100 West Center Road, Suite 520.
Public hearing agenda item number 29 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Candace Shockley, 121 West Center Road, Suite 520.
Just here to answer any questions. I know.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have to do this.
Don't worry about it. Any, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson. What did you, your, your light was not, okay, sorry. Moved and seconded to approve item 29. No lights, roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, 7 to 0. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 30 through 34 were held on January 15, 2019.
But before you do that, I, I am going to ask to remove 31, just for, I had a couple of questions I needed to.
Okay.
Ask for the record.
I move 30 and 32 through 34.
Second, roll call. I'm sorry.
I'd like to talk a little bit about 57 through 65.
That's next.
Oh, that's, oh, okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to check that, guys.
Roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 7 to 0.
Item 31.
And item 31, an ordinance approving a redevelopment tax increment financing redevelopment agreement with the 420 condominium regime for the 420 condominium regime tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at 420 South 11th Street in amount up to $685,682.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jennifer Taylor, I just had a, a couple of questions. I know that applicant's attorney is here as well, and if she needs to answer some of the questions as well, we could do that. Some time ago, when this came through as the redevelopment plan, I believe it was maybe back in September of 18, somewhere back in that timeframe, there was some conversation about subrogation as it related to, I believe, insurance proceeds and, and whether or not the city had a, a position to maybe recoup some of those. Could you address those and also maybe weigh in on whether or not we have to have some language in the redevelopment agreement to cover that area?
Sure. Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. I believe the conversation we had at the redevelopment plan stage was that, you know, there's an extensive and obviously very complex litigation that goes along with, with this issue, a number of attorneys, number of complainants, et cetera, that the residents of the 420 condominium have received the full extent of whatever insurance proceeds that they may receive as a result of their claim. We also discussed the fact that they have passed the time for them to make a claim against the city for any proceeds, so that they, they aren't able to do that. The tax increment financing that has been approved here would actually just make up the gap that they need to actually finish the redevelopment and the rebuilding of, of that project. Any sort of potential award or money that they might receive as a claimant in a lawsuit through other parties would be a claim that would obviously be subrogated to their insurance company. So the full amount of the insurance claim that has been paid out to each individual owner would then have to be given back to the insurance company if they were to get anything in the lawsuit. So what you're really talking about is, if at some point in time, the individual condominium owners or the condominium regime were to somehow, in a very, very, very unlikely circumstance, get awarded an amount through the lawsuit, that is, the insurance proceeds and additional money on top of that, that you would like to see somehow that we would recoup that from those individual owners. The concern I have with trying to address that in the existing agreement or in the note is that we would, I think, effectively render that note in that agreement, at the very least, unmarketable and possibly unenforceable, because the principal amount of the note would then be X, 600 and some odd thousand dollars, minus Y, Y being undeterminable, because it may or may not ever happen in the future, and even if it did, we don't know what that amount is. So I think that makes the agreement totally unenforceable, and for practical purposes, the condominium owners would not be able to take that note out and get financing on it because it is an undeterminable amount. So we would suggest that that is not something that we would want to pursue, or that we would ask the condominium owners to entertain.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I, I just wanted to make sure we had it on the record, because it was discussed back at the redevelopment plan stage, and, and wanted to make sure that we closed that loop. So I appreciate your.
No problem. And again, I think the odds of that ever coming to be, that, that circumstance are virtually none.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Moved and seconded to approve item 31. There are no lights, roll call.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Item 31 is approved, 7 to 0.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 35 through 76 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Good morning. Tony Burke Alter, Local 251, President. Item number 41, opponent.
Kelsey Johnson, Vice President, Local 251, opponent of item number 41.
Thank you. And are there any other, anything else you wanted to say, or you just as an opponent? Nope.
As I said, my name's Kelsey Johnson. I'm the Vice President of Nebraska Public Employees, Local 251. I stand here in opposition of this resolution. No one in this room will debate that the employees in the street maintenance department are overworked and their department is stretched thin. These men are dedicated to their jobs and to serving the Omaha community, and these men do not receive the recognition that they deserve. They give up their holidays, their weekends, their times with their families to make sure the roads in Omaha are safe for the rest of us. They put themselves in danger every day by working to fix our roads. There is a growing frustration in the workforce, and it's not just about the extended hours they're working. In 2012, there were 93 AEO-1s working for the City of Omaha in the street maintenance department. As of August 2018, there were 72. People are quitting or moving to other departments at a high rate. From 2017 till 2018, 28% of the AEO-1s that worked in the street maintenance department have either left the street maintenance department, quit, or were fired. This is a turnover rate that is unsustainable for our workforce. Workers are afraid to speak up because they fear retaliation from their own superior supervisors. These men have been bullied, intimidated, and are afraid to voice their concerns with how they're being treated by management for fear of losing their jobs. They're not wrong for being afraid to lose their jobs. In 2013, in our bargaining unit, we had 15 people suspended and seven people terminated. In 2018, we had 62 people suspended and 29 people terminated, with the majority of those coming from the street department. Today, I ask you to vote against this resolution. This is a temporary fix to the problem. We need to be addressing the hiring issues. No longer are recruiting classes held once every year or two. We now need multiple hiring classes throughout the city, throughout, throughout the year to try to build our workforce. Spending over $1,000 an hour to fill potholes is not a worthwhile use of taxpayer money. We need to be investing in our workers who are capable of doing the job. So today, I not, I am not only asking you to vote no on this resolution, but to investigate the actual cause of why this resolution even needs to be proposed.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Tony Burke Alter, President, Local 251. I know you guys have, have been served with a cease and desist. We feel that the city has neglected to bargain in good faith over this item. To show the impact that it may have on the bargaining unit, we ask that you guys hold off on this vote, or vote no, simply off the fact that $450,000 for a temporary solution for a permanent problem is, is not the answer. Typically, in the past, we have utilized different departments within the city to take care of the potholes. We have used contractors in the past to come in and address the pothole issue, and it failed. And, and today, here we are again, introducing something else that probably will fail. The city needs to address the discrepancy that we have in, you know, the workforce decreasing in, in the AEO-1 position, and address that instead of reaching out and wasting taxpayers' money in an attempt to try to say, we're trying to help you guys out by not giving you overtime. We view this as a unilateral change, and we hope that you guys would vote against this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, I think we need to offer the city some Seeing none, I think we need to offer the city a some rebuttal time, if necessary, a few minutes. Mr. Rousier, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. President. Austin Rousier, Omaha Public Works. Just some background on this item and kind of where we came from, and it was alluded to somewhat in the comments from the leadership of Local Two Fifty-One. We do have a workforce that, when we get into-
Two thousand and eighteen was a particularly strong pothole season. That's really driven by weather events and weather patterns. This was an event that the entire Midwest, large Midwestern cities-
Large Midwestern cities experienced significant pothole problems during the spring of two thousand and eighteen. Omaha was no different. And so what we experienced was a spike in pothole numbers in the February, March, April time period that was really fairly unprecedented to what Omaha had seen in the past. In fact, we, you know, we had record numbers of pothole work orders that were open and pothole work orders that were processed by our crews, hard-working crews. They did a fabulous job. One of the issues that we had, though, was, you know, we had extensive hours and extensive numbers of days of weeks on end where they worked. And that's not only problematic because of potholes, but if you consider the timing of when these problems arise, we have employees who have just come out of the winter season, who have just come out of the winter shifts. And so for months on end, from December, January, February, they're asked to work weekends, they're asked to work holidays, they're asked to work twelve-hour shifts for days on end for snow. And so when we come out of that snow, now we have this essentially crisis on our hands of potholes and this problem that persists. And so we're, again, asking them to continue days on end, weekends on end, twelve-hour shifts on end. And we know, we know, and what was pointed out by Local Two Fifty-One leadership is that, yes, there are significant issues that come out of that from a morale standpoint, from a turnover standpoint. These are seasons that we don't expect to happen every year. I don't expect to see another season like last year. I would hope we don't see another season like last year anytime soon. Again, it was fairly unprecedented. But we heard a lot of feedback from our operators, a lot of our people who said, hey, you know, this is too much. We got to find a way to get some days off, some time off. Yeah, they were making a lot of overtime. You know, overtime is certainly a good thing. It's certainly a benefit to the street maintenance division of Public Works. That's one of the benefits of working there is we know our guys are going to get a lot of overtime from plowing snow and on into the pothole season. And what we have here is not any kind of a strategy to replace the overtime that our operators would have, and it's not any kind of a strategy to replace any of the operators. Our goal would be to continue to advance our workforce, to grow our workforce. You know, as we accumulate more roads and more streets in our system, we'll obviously need a better maintenance effort to take care of that. What this contract is designed to do, and again, it's not necessarily a contract per se, but a price agreement, we're establishing a price agreement with three local contractors who can come in for us when we have these excess periods of potholes. Hopefully, that's a rarity, may not ever get used, but we would like to have some kind of a price agreement in place so that in these emergency situations, when we have people who are working excess hours, not necessarily extra hours, but excess hours, things that are causing burnout in the workforce. As a management issue, burnout in the workforce concerns me. And so we are looking at tools and ways that we can quell the tide of workforce burnout and try to provide some relief for the people, for the hard-working people that are in our crews. And so that was the thought behind trying to find some way to help with this because we did, again, we heard the concerns of our operators. We heard the concerns of the union last year. The union was very vocal in the number of hours that were being worked. And so, you know, looking for solutions, this was one of the solutions that came to mind. I know there were some questions and there was some comments-
I'm asking you to wrap up here real quick because I know there are going to be some questions a little later on.
I'll just hold off until there's questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pauls, you didn't have any? Okay. Mr. Palermo.
Mr. President, Mr. Rousier, please. I had heard from the leadership of Two Fifty-One that from the AEO one numbers, I believe it was two thousand and twelve to now, and which I had asked you this previous question earlier and pre-council, they had stated there was ninety-three AEO ones in place then, and there's seventy-two now. Is that accurate?
So what I want to look at and what I'll look at is the budget numbers because depending on-
No, I just asked the question about the AEO ones.
Excuse me, the budget numbers.
Yeah, excuse me. I just asked the question about the AEO ones. If you don't have the answer, just tell me you don't have the answer.
No, I have the answer, and I'm prepared to give you the answer.
Okay, so it would be a number.
Okay.
Ninety-three in twelve, seventy-two in eighteen. What do you have?
I have ninety in my two thousand and nineteen budget.
Ninety in two thousand and eighteen of AEO ones?
AEO ones.
Okay, what about eighteen?
Eighty-nine.
Okay, so let me go on to a couple more questions here. So obviously, every time we subcontract out this work, there's a reason for it. I'm not always against it, but sometimes I am, and sometimes there's logical reason why I am. I know why we can't do panel replacement is as efficient as some contractors because as I read through my articles, in the budget of the street maintenance monies that was allotted, one of the quotes was, we're going to focus a lot of this budget on panel replacement to free up our employees to fill potholes. So that's one thing where I'm trying to wrap my head around if we have this extra amount of time for employees, what are they doing? And the other thing is, as we look at these costs, we have to see what it costs the city for the three-man crew or the four-man crew based on what the subcontractor would cost because the question was also asked in pre-council, not by myself, but would the contractors be required to provide the same sort of level of service that we would? And I don't know, maybe I'm wrong and I don't know, so I'll ask this question. Are we allowed to run three-man asphalt crews?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So do you have the cost figure of what it costs the city to run the seven-guy crew? Because I have what we're going to pay the subcontractors.
We don't ever run a seven-man crew. We run a three-man crew at the rate of approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars an hour. We run a four-man crew at the rate of approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars an hour.
So you do realize that the city provides a service for less than what we would pay these subcontractors to do this work for?
Per hour, that's correct, and we don't make a profit.
Okay. And there's another part of this, too, where the subcontractor fee is way more than what we could do it for as a city. But there's the other part, too, it's material. So tell me what the subcontractors would use for material for this emergency pothole request.
They would use the same material that we would use in our operation.
And where would they get that material from?
They would get it, the street maintenance would provide the material to them.
So the same employees you're saying we need to give a break to because they're overworked, those same employees are going to have to provide this product to the contractors that show up when we request them.
It would be given from the stockpiles that we have on hand.
So let me rewind a couple weeks about the news story we all seen, and it was how we recycle asphalt. So we don't have that stockpile on hand because we have to put it into a drum and we have to make it. So part of that cost of making it, and I just want to spell this out, this isn't going to be a question, it's more of a comment, and you heard it earlier, but maybe some of you didn't, we have the crew at the end of the day who are being told, don't put this out on unapproved roads or roads that need it, or whatever it is. So they take it back to the yard, the paid crew, they dump it out the yard. Then we pay a city employee to load it into a single-axle truck, who's also on the clock, to take it to the central location to stockpile it because we're going to recycle it, we're not going to waste it, according to this news story that I watched. So as we stockpile it, we're going to pay an employee to get it ready, to put it in this machine, as an employee operates the machine, and another employee possibly loads the subcontractor up. So we, as a city, absorb all that cost, which I don't think is in these costs of this emergency pothole repair. And then I also hear where our employees are overworked, but this is a way to give them some time off. I don't see it. I don't see the cost here on what we're saving. I don't see the time off of what we're saying or saving. And then the other part is, too, I had asked HR personnel, give me what the going rate is for an AEO one, total benefits, packages and all. Because you'll hear, hey, we don't want to add employees just for potholes. And I agree, we don't. But I think you, along with a lot of people that are here at the city, they would love to have some extra employees. Let's be honest, we need them. As we keep annexing, which is what we have to do, we got to add employees. And I don't know that the numbers dictate that, and I'll get to the lane miles in a minute. So each time we subcontract something out, each time something comes about that it's in an emergency, I don't know that it's in an emergency on my part when we all lived, or most of us have lived in this state our whole entire life. We haven't did this since two thousand and nine. So I looked at the past weather reports, and the amount of precipitation we received hasn't differed that much, and we haven't had this request for emergency potholes since two thousand and nine. So to me, as I add all this up, and I know I'm throwing it at you, and it's just a comment, and I'll give you time to say something if you'd like, because I probably have more questions, it seems to me we need to add more employees, one way or another, however you look at it. So if we don't have a cost savings from the subcontractor doing it, we need the employees. We've heard that the AEO one, even if you hired four of them, would be less than this. We don't even get to the tip of the iceberg in which our city employees can do this. On these crews that you have going out each and every day on an average daily basis, these are AEO ones. I know you have everybody that can do it when you force them to do it, but these are AEO ones. So when you look at them numbers, that's what you want to look at. And the bottom line is, you're taking away these jobs. I haven't stood for it in the past, I'm not going to stand for it in the future when it comes to the fact of us trying to sub this work out when we, again, can do it for less with no extra cost to the citizens of Omaha. But if we approve this, the contract's going to cost more than it would cost from just hiring them employees.
So on that last point, the cost of the contract is essentially equivalent to four employees, as you had alluded to, and those would be year-round employees. So those four employees, they would not have near the capacity in those peak periods, February, March, April, that we talked about. They have nowhere near the capacity that this contract could bring in for us to do that. Yes, we understand when we introduce contractors and we introduce private business and we have mobilization costs and profits that aren't shared, you know, mobilization costs and profits aren't something that the city would take into account of that. So yes, obviously, our costs would be lower than what we would see from contract forces. One item that I would like to rebut, councilman, in regards to your statements about increase of labor. In two thousand and nine, the city had four thousand five hundred lane miles. We had a hundred and fifty-two full-time employees, eighty-one operator ones. In two thousand and nineteen, we have four thousand nine hundred fifty-three lane miles. That's a ten percent increase in that time period. Our budget of full-time employees is a hundred and ninety-nine. That's a thirty-one percent increase. Our increase in AEO ones is to ninety employees. That's an eleven percent increase. So in both those categories, regardless of which way you want to slice it, AEO one or full-time employee, our increase in employees has exceeded our increase in lane miles. And so we feel like we're growing this workforce, we're developing this workforce, and we're consistently working on ways with HR to improve our hiring methods, to improve our retention methods, because those are our goals. Because, again, we don't want to employ these contracts either. We would like our own people to do it. But when we get into a situation where we have an extreme event, an extreme event that we don't expect to happen every year, we'd like to have a resource available to us that can help us out with that.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I would like to add, too, if you think I'm sitting here saying, hey, let's not approve this and let's not fill these potholes, you're wrong. I want to see them filled just like anybody else. It's a way that we get to filling them that is a reduction in cost to the citizens of Omaha. And again, when you have these employees that are, this is their bread and butter. These are the skilled union employees, that this is what they do every single day. They know what tool, what sort of material, how much is going to be here. They're going to be more efficient at it. They're going to be better at it. They're going to take more pride in this work than if you try to sub it out, knowing that the material we're going to use is going to be from us anyway. So like I always say, I'm not going to sit back and watch these jobs be given away, especially when I hear that it's not at a cost savings. So I appreciate you being here, Mr. Rousier. I do have one more question for the leadership of Two Fifty-One.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. Ms. Melton?
Sorry, I had one more question.
Oh, you got one more question, I'm sorry.
No.
Tony Burke Alter, Local Two Fifty-One.
So I heard some numbers that were a little different than what you had stated in your opening, but I didn't hear you mention lane miles. Do you have the number of lane miles from the year in question to now?
The actual increased number, Mr. Rousier would be more familiar with that, or Director Stube would actually have those actual numbers. One rebuttal I would like to say would, Mr. Rousier, you budgeted for ninety employees. Doesn't mean you have ninety employees out here doing the potholes. You actually have seventy-two. That's the actual number that we have of employees out here doing the potholes. It's a no-brainer.
And that was the question.
You need to increase the workforce.
And that was the question I was going to ask you, too. We hear of the number of boots we should have on the ground, but how many employees do we actually have here? Because I heard the disturbing numbers of suspensions or people who voluntarily left or whatever it is, and it's good to hear the one number, but if you're saying it's actually seventy-two based off of suspensions or whatnot, now, I'm not saying they weren't justified or they are because I just don't have, I'm not privy to that information.
Right, right.
But there truly is a difference in these numbers here.
There definitely is. From the way we have, you can sit here and tell the city council, you budgeted for ninety employees. We could tell you that we have a issue with management in the street department. We've been trying to address this issue with human resource, addressed this issue with Austin Rousier. I've directed my complaints to Mr. Stube to no resolve. I even went to the mayor and addressed some of the concerns with her. So we're trying to change the atmosphere to where it's a more comfortable work environment. But anytime you have a short-staffed work environment, you will have frustrations from the employees when it creates long hours, long days away from your family, especially on a consistent basis. That's the issues that we're trying to address with Mr. Rousier to say, how do you retain the employees? How do you consistently keep the employees? If you have a discrepancy in the discipline, it's been handed out over time and time, again, that's one of the issues that needs to be addressed. So that's where we stand with this. And as far as this resolution, again, we come back to the cease and desist order. We feel that it's a unilateral change in of the contract, and it's one that the city should bargain with the unit on. Instead of going to the employees and saying, we hear your complaints, not one time have they addressed the complaints with us.
So let me ask you one last question because I might have some colleagues that want to weigh in or maybe not. You speak for the union, obviously being the president. Can your union members do this job?
Most definitely.
Because we've heard that maybe they're overworked and they can't, and this is the reason for it.
Oh, oh. Well, I believe the consensus would be, we have worked long hours in the past, and Mr. Rousier just told you guys. Last year, we had a huge spike in potholes. Why did we have a huge spike in the work orders coming in? Well, the work orders were probably because of the app in which the city started saying, well, you aggressively advertise this app in which you can report the work orders. Maybe that had an effect on the spike of work orders that we had. And then we need to address the crumbling infrastructure. That's something that you guys have been working on, just discussed this with the mayor. Over time, it will reduce the work orders. Currently, today, what's the average? I'd ask Austin, are we on average right now for work orders? There's not a spike in the work orders today. So if you ask me, can our employees do the job, we've been doing the jobs. You guys are now taking it out of our bargaining unit and allowing for a contractor to come in and do the job when, in the past, you guys have utilized the city employees, not just, Austin says that he's budgeted for ninety. You didn't just use the street department. You has also used other departments to take care of potholes in an emergency. We do it with snowplows, we do it with potholes also. That should be the solution, not contracting it out to a contractor.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mr. Palermo for right now.
I am, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. I think procedurally, what we ought to do is- Okay, I think procedurally, what we ought to do is ask, you know, first of all, if anyone else has any other items that we have not talked about here, let's take 41 off consent, and we can vote on all of those if we want, and then continue to do 41. What's the pleasure of the council?
Let's vote on the others.
Can we vote on the others? If no one has?
Move to approve consent other than number 41.
It's been moved and seconded, I'm sorry. Yeah, if there's anyone else here for any of the other items, I'd ask earlier, and nobody stood up, so.
I just had a question on items 57 through 65, and I see the individuals here, and I'd just like to have just a little bit of information. It shouldn't take too long.
Okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Dennis Briers, I'm a landscape architect and park and recreation planner with the City of Omaha Parks, Recreation, and Public Property Department.
Okay, today, I notice we have a number of issues dealing with the Park and Recreation Advisory Board recommending projects that, well, dealing with the parks and runways.
Yes.
Would you just give us a little bit of information, how that comes about?
The Park and Recreation Advisory Board, their purpose is to advise the mayor, the city council, and the Parks Department, you know, on matters concerning parks and recreation projects. This includes review and approving modifications to SID parks and recreation areas as well. And it also includes land acquisitions for Parks, Boulevards, and Trails, dealing with Park Boulevard and Trail improvement plans and costs, and also naming of park and recreation facilities, and a number of other things, too, so.
Okay, but now I see the dollar amount. I see some of the dollars come from the SID, I see Gretna schools in it, I see Elkhorn schools in it, and I'm just.
They, those two applications, the Gretna schools and the Elkhorn schools, they were dealing with Boulevard improvements that are part of the SID that that school is being built in.
Okay.
So that's why they came, because as part of the school development, they are going to make improvements to the Boulevard that is within that SID.
So this is mostly, this is like SID money?
This is all, yeah, the money for all of these projects, one of these schools, and I can't remember, let's see, it was the.
Well, just any of the.
Well, any, well, one of the schools asked for some funding from the Trail and Boulevards Fund for the improvements. That was denied, or recommended denied, and the Park Board agreed with that because, what is it? Institutional developments do not pay a Trails and Boulevard fee to begin with. So their improvements are all part of, will come out of their school funds there. The other one, Gretna, actually said that they were going to do the improvements for the bond issue that was going to build the school, if it passed. When they came to the board, the bond issue was going to be up for a vote to the public a couple of weeks later. It did get approved, so they will be making those improvements. The other SIDs that were on this, that were heard by the board are either using excess cash in the SID, or they're adding on to their bond debt on a couple of them. And then one of them is doing excess cash, asking for Trail and Boulevard funds, as well as going for a Trail Assistance Grant from the NRD. But in all the cases, anything that comes to the Park Board with these SIDs, it's always their money, either excess cash or bond, adding on to their bond debt, getting that.
I'm just curious, I hear Trails and Boulevard dollars, now where does that come, I'm just curious, where does that come?
I don't know too much, that gets more, someone from the Planning Department could probably fill in a little more. It's just, as developments are planned and done, there is a, there's a fee that is paid into that, based on the size of the development, so.
Thank you, I appreciate, I just wanted to.
You're welcome.
Make sure we understood some of that, thank you very much.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve all items under the Resolution Consent Agenda, with the exception of item 41. There are no further lights.
Didn't you second it? Who seconded it?
Yeah, my light was from 41, so I'm just.
Yeah, so I motion, she seconded it.
Okay, we got it.
Yep, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Back on 41, Ms. Melton.
Thank you, Mr. Rouser, could you come back? And I think where we're at is, regardless of, I guess, what side, I didn't realize that we were, that there were some of these issues going on, because it's never been brought up in our Public Works Committee meetings, and we meet every week. So I hadn't heard about any of these maybe problems that were being had with management and staff, and maybe that's something that we could work on, and if it was brought up in our committee meetings, perhaps Councilman Jerem and myself, and Councilman Palermo could weigh in, so I guess I'm kind of saying that to both sides. But the bottom line is, in about two to three weeks, we're going to have potholes popping up all over this city, like thousands and thousands of potholes. What I don't want to see is now potholes aren't going to get filled in a timely manner because we now have employees and management having some issues. I mean, that's what Washington does, that's not what the City of Omaha does. We don't, we don't come to a standstill because we can't work something out. So what I would like to know is maybe what we can do to further along this process, what you're planning to do to maybe increase the, if you have budgeted 90, you said 90 people, but you have 72, and that's because, I mean, you've got to recruit people. So I'm assuming you're continuously working on recruiting and hiring people, is that correct?
Austin Rouser, Public Works, yes, that's correct, Councilman. In fact, I actually just got a text from Tim Young, who said that our current number is 88 operator ones. We also, we also just made offers to 16 of those that are going to start through the hiring process.
Right.
Now, we have vacancies at all level, and so we do tend to treat this as somewhat of a cash balance and a law of averages, so at times we will go over our budgeted numbers, knowing that with turnover and attrition, we'll go back under. That is kind of the way that we manage the AEO one classification, so that we don't ever get to a point to where we're significantly under budget for very long. And so, just want to make that.
So you're not laying people off, you're always, basically, you're constantly trying to hire more people and stay up to your budgeted amount?
We haven't had a layoff since I've been here.
No, and, I mean, we've got, unemployment is extremely low in this city, so I am assuming that you do have difficulties, maybe sometimes, finding and keeping employees.
Correct, our last, we posted five times last year, our last posting was for 20 vacancies, we had 19 apply.
But even if you were to hire all the people and you got back up to the budgeted amount, you have a spike in potholes that lasts about six to eight weeks in Omaha, correct?
Correct.
I mean, they all kind of pop at once, we get calls in from everyone. And so this really has nothing to do with the current number of employees, other than they would have to double their work. And what I just heard today, and I even heard from Mr. Burkhalter, it was, quote, "We're short-staffed, and the amount of hours they're working, it's hard on their families." So it sounds to me like we need to figure this out, but we're not going to be able to figure this out in about two weeks. So I think it might be best if we brought in this private contractor, so that we're not completely overworking the staff that we have, have them quit. Now we're going to have even less people, and then between now and next year, maybe we can reevaluate. But the other thing that the contractor brings with it is additional equipment, correct?
Yes.
So it's not just paying people. And again, if, let's just say, in two weeks, you don't have this super spike in potholes like we had last year, then you may not use them, is that right?
That's correct.
So we're not actually hiring these three people, and already said the money's out the door. This is, if we get the spike, and your people are too overworked, and you're not going to be able to fill them on time, then we're just giving you the authority to spend up to $450,000 to bring in some extra subcontractors to help your guys out and get these pothole fills, so that they're not working 60-hour work weeks, and not being able to go home to their families.
That's correct.
Did I summarize that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so some of these other issues that we may have with management and number of employees and things, I would like to further that discussion, but unfortunately, we probably don't have time to fix all those issues before the pothole season begins, is that right?
That would be correct. I know one thing in the works, we do have a joint advisory committee between the city and the union that we are restarting, that hasn't been in place for many years, so hopefully that will lead to some common ground.
Well, I think that's a step in the right direction, and I would like for the Folk Works Committee to kind of be apprised of that, so that we're not being told for the first time that we have these problems in a 2:00 meeting. So, thank you, and I just happen to be standing there when I say that, it wasn't necessarily directed to you. Mr. Burkhalter, could I just bring you up real quick?
Yes, ma'am. Tony Burkhalter.
Thank you, and I want to say that sounds promising, I mean, there's issues that, I guess, that are going on that we weren't even aware of, at least my Public Works Committee wasn't aware of. And so when I say that, that is concerning to me, and I think that there should be more discussions, there should be things that we do. But again, we do have pothole season coming up in a couple of weeks. It doesn't sound like we have the staffing, or at least the capacity currently, the current staffing, and it sounds like the current members are overworked. So perhaps for this season, maybe this is the answer, and then we need to continue to work for next year, because we don't have the capacity to fill a spike in potholes like we had last year, if we get it again.
Yes, ma'am. No, you guys do have the capacity to take on the workload and get the job done. If you utilize the city employees correctly, we have support help. We do this with snow removal also, where we pull individuals from different departments. You guys are all aware of this. What would be the difference when we have a pothole, a spike in potholes? What would be the difference? Why would we not want to utilize the resources that we currently have, versus giving a contract of $450,000?
Well, we're not giving a contract for 450, we're authorizing up to 450.
Well, you're authorizing it.
Yeah, if we need it. But that's, that's so that, so that your union members aren't going to work five, 12-hour shifts, or multiple week after week, and not be able to take any time off whatsoever, which, I mean, I heard from you.
You're assuming that.
That it's difficult.
You have a, you're assuming that everyone is willing to give up the overtime opportunities that have been presented to them with the pothole. That's not the case. You had one employee go on television, directed by, I don't know, Mr. Rouser.
I don't know.
I don't know who authorized it.
I don't know, I didn't see it, I'm just looking at what we heard today, so.
However, the employees that I have heard from do not want to lose this overtime opportunity. And we do have the capability to repair the potholes with the utilization of employees from different departments. Those other departments have done this in the past, it would be no difference. So if you're saying that if you have the capability to dive into the funds of the $450,000, why would you not have the capability to pull the employees that will be needed from a different department?
Well, but I, and I guess I don't know what departments, I mean, we certainly can't pull out of the Fire Department, Police Department to fill potholes, we certainly can't. I mean, there's many departments, Planning Department, we're not, they all have jobs and roles that they're filling, so I'm not sure that they're.
We have utilized this in the past.
The people to pull it out.
We have utilized it in the past, we did it last year.
Thank you, I have no further questions. Mr. Rouser? What effect will this have on the current city employees? Will there be any cut in overtime for those that typically get and want overtime?
I would think there would be some reduction in overtime for them. Again, we want that to be a reasonable opportunity for them to have overtime, but not excess. I think one thing to bear in mind, that's contrary to what Mr. Burkhalter just told you, is that last year, when we did have this excess pothole season, when we got to where we would have a Saturday that was entirely voluntary, and we reached the burnout stage, we didn't have volunteers. So there weren't people that wanted to come in after those times, and that was something that we certainly experienced last year.
Okay, so last year, you found there were people that said, no, I don't want the overtime, I've worked enough.
Absolutely.
And so that's where you're at with this contract, is to fill those spots and make sure the potholes get filled for when your people just can't do it anymore.
Correct.
And do you bring people in from other departments?
We do get support from the Parks Department, thank you very much, Brooke, and they come out and they help us from time to time. There's no other departments other than Parks that can help with it, though.
Okay, so Parks would be the only employees that could help, but they still have responsibilities during the winter?
Correct.
Okay, and filling their own?
Correct.
They actually have responsibilities on roads and inside the parks?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just, I just hope everybody can work together right now and over the next year, because I certainly don't want to see, I don't want to have to tell taxpayers and drivers in the City of Omaha that we're delayed in getting the potholes filled at this point in time, because there's some internal arguments going on amongst management and the union. So I hope you just told me that you're starting up another review committee, and you're working with Mr. Burkhalter?
Yep.
Okay, I hope that gets done, and gets done sooner than later, so that we can resolve some of these issues.
First meeting's on our schedule already.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Pauls, thank you.
Mr. President, Austin, could I just say? You know, I don't want to do negotiations right now, because this is not the time to do it. But I found out in my past life, when I had started losing a lot of employees, there was a reason. And it may not be the employee, it may be the hierarchy that they're working under. When somebody leaves your office, does anybody talk to them and ask them why?
Yes.
They do? How often are, you're the people who work for you, how often are they evaluated? And I heard that a number of them are dismissed, about, do you have a program, say, hey, Rich, these 24 people, we evaluated them, and we gave them a sheet of paper, and they signed off on it?
Our people are excellent at doing evaluations. In a probationary period, after an operator one is hired, in the first six months is their probation, we do monthly coachings with them, where we sit down and tell them what they're doing well, what they need to improve on. They have a probationary performance appraisal at six months, and then annually, they get performance appraisals after that.
Okay, well, they sign off, no, I think that's great, that's okay, yeah, thank you, appreciate that. Here's, will I find, that's all I need from you. Here's what I find interesting is, we're really concerned about spending these dollars, and I know we should be, but then I got to thinking, snow removal, we pay to have that done for us outside our, Silverstone for our insurance. We use an outside company to help with our insurance plan. Don't hear too many people arguing about that. Negotiations, we have people, I've been told, inside our building who can do the negotiations. But no, we go outside and hire somebody to do negotiations, and say it was bad, but I don't hear a lot of people say, well, why are we doing that? Or why are we using Silverstone? We do, we look at the pension, we do studies on the pension, we hire outside people to do that. So you see, you are not the only people that were looking to, for outside help. The waste collection contract, just to get that developed, we hired consultants to give us information. We didn't do it within the city. And we have some individuals here, I know we're developing downtown Omaha, and we're fortunate to have some of those individuals here today. Believe it or not, they are the reason why we're at where we're at, because we had outside people helping the City of Omaha, or it would not have happened. So I'm really concerned if there is some distinction between the management and the union, but also when people realize we do use outside groups to help us run the city. I mean, just the ones I mentioned, I mean, and these are not by any means cheap. Because if you have, you know, snow removal, we fact, we even have private companies who evaluate what's happening out in the neighborhoods. See, so this, we do a lot of that. And like I say, Silverstone, if it weren't for our insurance, Silverstone has a lot to do with that, and other reasons. And we ought to see, we ought to be more on top of those negoti, of those salaries. Negotiations, we ought to really be on top of that, how much we pay outside when we have people inside. What you're saying about it's happening with you, it's happening throughout the city. So maybe it's time for the city to start reflecting, we do need help. And apparently, I do not want people to come to me and say, pothole, they're pothole crazy. So I can see why we may need some help right now. But as my understanding, we do not have to spend all $400-plus thousand. Maybe this year, we'll spend a small amount of it. But I do feel, when you say that you're not, you know, you don't have your full capacity of a number of people working with you, there's something wrong there. I'm not blaming the management on it, there's something is missing, maybe it's a salary, or maybe the work is just too hard, you know? But I think we have to realize we have, we get help from lots of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure where, some of you are driving, but the pothole season's already well upon us.
Yes, it is.
You know, when I was younger, we used to say, you know, if the corn, you wanted your corn knee-high by the Fourth of July, and I thought, well, maybe if a pothole's knee-deep, bye. But I can't come up with a word that rhymes with deep that would properly explain the situation, but that kidding aside. I do have a question, I think, Bernard in Bosch, I think, if you could come down, Bernard? And I, I just wanted a clarification because I know Mr. Burkhalter brought this up and some of his comments too, but I just want to have it on the record. Is it the city's position that this has been collectively, collectively bargained so that the city can proceed in this manner?
Bernard in Bosch, Deputy City Attorney. I guess I would say, I don't think that's quite accurate. I think it's fair to say that the city reserved in its management rights the ability to supplement its workforce with independent contractors, that's quite clear in the management rights. We've done it obviously in cases of snow removal, we've done it obviously in the past with no change in the contract language for potholes. We've even, in my view, gone to arbitration on the subject, and the city prevailed in that particular arbitration. I say that with no, not a taking a view one way or the other on the dispute between Mr. Rousier and Mr. Burkhalter. I mean, as a practical matter, I believe legally we are able to hire these contractors if we feel it, feel it is appropriate.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I just wanted to restate that, you know, this, again, this is a fund from which to draw from in the event it's needed. And I'd like to encourage, you know, management and rank and file to continue to, to work on, on scheduling and staffing. But you know, the bottom line too is, I think it needs to be said, is regardless of who's out there doing the work, citizens need to be aware that we are in the beginning of pothole season and, and to be safe and make sure that those workers who are out there have families and, and we want to make sure that they are able to go home at the end of the day to see their families. So please be aware and be safe because they will be out there at risk trying to make the streets better for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Harding, if they, if I could find a word that rhymes with deep, I, I know I've got plenty of them in the district right now, so we'll see. Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. I don't want to belabor this too much longer, I think most have already asked my questions. But Austin, if you would, for a couple of follow-ups for you. The timing of this also concerns me, I mean, this is a lot to unpack at a two o'clock meeting on a, in late January, when we know pothole season is upon us. And two very different approaches about how to handle that from management and, and labor here. Just to catch my eye though, because we haven't seen this in a long time, a contract out to do this work, this particular work. I think this morning you said the last time was 2009?
Correct.
So I think you were not in your position at that time, but if you were around, my question to you is, when we did this in 2009, was that purely a weather-related motivation as well? Or was there a staffing issue at that time?
I was not around at that time, I do have some anecdotal rationale behind that. I believe that was, you know, again, potholes are all caused by the weather. I think that that was a weather-related event. If I'm not mistaken, there was a pretty significantly heavy winter that was, that was just prior to that season.
I see you're looking at Mr. Stube maybe, Bobby, you want to take a shot at that too?
Yeah, Bob Stube.
In your opinion, was that purely weather, or was that a staffing issue at the time?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, so again, I'll, it, it was a significant weather event because if I'm not mistaken, I think we got twice as much snow during that particular season. And so there's, there was an excess number of potholes that popped up. And, and once again, we're talking about quantities that occur within a very short period of time. And so we have this peak, and as indicated this morning, the intent is that we have this peak that occurs right after the winter season, and we're trying to essentially shave that peak off. And we do that by, by utilizing outside services. It's nothing against the employees that work within Public Works because obviously they have experience, they have knowledge, they have training, they know what they're doing when it comes to repairing potholes. The other thing is, is that when we ask those employees to work those extended days, when we're in shifts, we're working in the dark, the intent is, is to try to shave that peak off so that those employees aren't necessarily exposed to the, to the traffic hazards that might exist out there. And as, as Councilman Harding indicated also, is that there's an exposure to the, to the traveling public by, by having an excess number of potholes that take in a long period of time for us to, to repair.
And so would your position be that this time is also only weather-related? Or is it possibly staffing-related too?
Well, again, it's, it potentially is both because, once again, is that, you know, Austin talked about the quantity of AEO1s that we have on staff. He failed to mention the fact that we've increased the number of MR2s that are within. And I think I indicated this morning at pre-council that since, since 2006, I think we've added about 45 people to the street maintenance division alone to try to address the, the services that we are required to do. And also want to mention the fact that, you know, this is not the, the only thing we do. Councilman Pauls mentioned snow removal. I'd like to mention the fact that we do right-away mowing, which most likely we have staff that can, are capable of doing that. We do things such as, as Councilman Palermo mentioned about panel repair, those are the types of things. We have water main breaks that occur, you know, that are not to the fault of the city, and so we utilize outside contractors to assist in those particular operations also, which all can be done by city staff. But, but there's a lot of activities that are being done out there by city staff. And I think this is an opportunity for us to potentially utilize those services if we need to.
And to this notion of, you know, $450,000 could equal four employees, that's about what, about what it is, I think. When you talk about AEO1s, if the notion would be to try and hire those folks for pothole season, I mean, it's January 22nd, that puts us in a bind too, right? But to this, to this notion of January 29th, I mean, I'm a week behind, right? I lost a week there somewhere. So we're even more dire consequences. But to this notion of staffing numbers, I, I would encourage also the Public Works Committee to dive into that. And I think we heard wildly different numbers today, at least initially, about how many we do have at the moment, which is a little concerning. And it's always been my concern that when we talk about budgeted positions, that doesn't mean anything. That's always been my concern about how we handle our, our police counts, our officers on the streets. The budget frequently says one thing, but with retirements and hirings and large recruit classes and other factors, that number fluctuates wildly during the year. And that might be what we need to pay attention to here, not budgeted numbers, but actual numbers, actual people on the job. And to determine if that's something that is the right level for what we're trying to accomplish here, it sounds like that's a concern. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Jerram?
Yes.
Mr. Rousier, so we heard the, the local representatives say there's 72 people on the job today. You said that the HR directors told you there are 88 full-time employees on, on staff today?
That, that would be the automotive equipment operator one classification? There's 88 of the 90 budgeted positions available.
So the AEO1 positions we heard is the automotive equipment operator one, right?
Right, those are the year-round pothole operators. In peak seasons, we bring in our other classifications also to assist with those operations.
So while, since there's been this time go by, since we began this conversation, I just got on the city's Human Resources Job Openings website to see, well, what are we doing to try to fill these positions? And I was, I was interested to find out, when you go to HR period, cityofomaha.org, current job openings, go to the blue area and you click on that, then it comes up another screen, which is sjobs.brasring.com. And you click on the search, "All openings," 21 positions for the city are posted, and there's one AEO1, quote, "part-time seasonal 2019 job posting." So why, why don't you have the full times advertised?
Well, we, we just closed AEO1. We posted it five times last year. It just closed, we, we posted with 20 openings, we had 19 apply. We just got our list last week, and we did interviews last week, and we've made 16 offers. So that, that's just posted. I've reached out to HR again, saying we need to work on another posting, we need to start bringing people in. With the AEO2 and AEO3 classifications, those will post, but those, the employment lists require testing that can't be done in the winter. So those operators actually have to drive, they have to do a driving test, they have a course that they have to pass on with different pieces of equipment. So, so those tests can't be conducted right now, but those are, those are coming and those are pending. MR2 is another one that just closed, we just tested on that, and we're waiting the results of, of the eligibility list for that test. So we are, even though you may not see anything at the moment that's out there, we have been in constant posting, hiring, testing, establishment of lists, interview process for quite some time now.
Well, I would think that if this truly were a necessity because we, we're, have the need because we can't do it on our own with who we have, I would feel more comfortable if we were at full hires for the budgeted positions. And I can see the merit if you're at your full budget and you got an emergency on your hands where you need to go beyond what we have budgeted, because we operate on budget. But I don't, I'm not comfortable when we're not even advertising for the empty positions. So, thank you.
Thank you, there are no more lights, is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve item 41, there are no further lights, roll call.
Jerram?
No.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
No.
Palermo?
No.
Festerson?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
Motion fails three to four. Item 77, an ordinance to designate the automobile sales building and Army Corps laboratory located at 420 South 18th Street as a landmark, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 77 is today, proponents please.
Public hearing is closed.
Oh, the public hearing is, oh, that's, that's right, moved to approve. Moved and seconded to approve item 77, no further lights, roll call.
Jerram?
Yes.
Melton? Pauls? Palermo? Festerson?
Yes.
Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 77 is approved, seven to zero. Item 78, a resolution to approve the agreement with CHI Health Bergen Mercy in the amount of $1,600,000 for public improvements to 78th Street between Mercy Road and Shirley Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 78 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 78, no lights, roll call.
Jerram?
Yes.
Melton? Pauls? Palermo? Festerson?
Pass.
Harding? Mr. President?
Yes.
Festerson?
Pass.
Councilmember Festerson abstained due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 78 is approved, six to zero. Item 79, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $182,918 for the fiscal year 2017 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Public hearing agenda item number 79 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 80, an ordinance to approve a contract services agreement addendum to ordinance 41416 with Tally Management Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for a one-year period.
Public hearing agenda item number 80 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Item 81, an ordinance to approve the Omaha Tri-Park Complex Development and Management Agreement with Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority and the Downtown Riverfront Trust.
Public hearing agenda item number 81 is today, proponents please. Thank you guys for your patience, kind of a long meeting today.
I must start by saying this is both of our first city council meetings. It may well be our last, I don't know. I'm Ken Stinson, I'm retired, my address is 3555 Farnham Street, I'm retired, kinda. I am the co-chair with Mr. Bai of the Riverfront Redevelopment Committee and the Downtown Riverfront Trust, which is the fundraising arm for, for the work we're, we're about here. We just came today to answer questions you might have, or to give you a brief update, very brief update on where we are with regard to schedule and process with the, with the project. To set the framework, last June timeframe, middle of summer, we arrived at a, after a year and a half's worth of work, at a conceptual master plan, which you all have seen and many in the public have seen. We did a conceptual estimate on that with regard to what it might cost, and the range of estimate was $260 to $290 million. We evaluated our fundraising capacity and then set that as a, as a target. And Moens will talk about where we are with regard to our fundraising, but in simple terms, we're on track with that. So we then went ahead with the next level of detail of engineering to define the details of our, of our scope and the work that it might take to get there. That process been going on this fall, and then we've transitioned into a point where we're now estimating that, or have estimated it. It's a process, not a point in time. And we are, as we estimate it, we're looking at how that relates to our capacity to fund it, the $260 to $290 million. And we started, not surprisingly to me who've been this, through this many times, more than our original numbers were. So we're re-looking at the details, the schedule issues, what are the impacts on cost? And I'm happy to say we are back within the range of our $260 to $290 million. It's a work in process, we'll continue to value engineering, value engineer this probably over the course of the next year, year and a half, as we design and, and so forth. So it's going very well. Our, our original plan or has been, or our plan has been for some time to start the work on the Gene Leahy Mall in March very soon, pending approval, of course, of this resolution and move forward. We're on track to do that still. With the work we've been doing over the last number of weeks, we believe we are in the late 2023 completion timeframe, and we see opportunities to move that up. We just soon not open a park in December or January, actually, so we're very focused on how we can move that up and get some summertime enjoyment out of it. So all in all, we're quite pleased with the progress and, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Bai, who will tell you the money end of the, of the process.
Moens Bai, Chairman of Belmont, and my address is 1 Belmont Plaza, 68154. And as you know, we have two parallel funding efforts taking place. One is for capital, and capital is what Ken just mentioned. We are planning between $260 and $290, and in total, and subject to the city council approval. If you deduct the $50 million from the city, we had to raise 225 million. If you take the midpoint between $260 and $275, so it's a 225 million. Currently, we are at 220 million, and we have a number of requests out. So we feel very confident that we will reach the midpoint and will continue to raise money because I'm sure we'll find things that we can improve on as we go forward. The other funding effort that takes place is for the ongoing maintenance. Make sure that this is activated, maintained, and in a, in a manner that what we call kind of the Disney World-type quality. And as you know, again, we have a split between the city responsibility and what we will raise. We have to raise $30 million, $3 million a year over 10 years. And currently, we are at $24 million, and we have a number of meetings set up. And you will remember, when we talked about the capital, we all, we all went to foundations. It's all philanthropic dollars. And it's been very interesting to see how, whether this project is in the sweet spot of a foundation, it's kind of in the sweet spot on everybody's foundation. So they are all stepping up, those we have talked to, and that's been good to see. Then we went to businesses and individuals to raise the $3 million a year for 10 years. And I think so far, we have about 15 commitments, which adds up to the $24 million. And I'm very confident that over the next month or two, we'll have the $30 million raised there too. So that's where we are on funding, and that's where we are on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you.
Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Barbara Sudds, 2810, Greby. I'm actually not against the entire project. The only thing I really am against is the demolition of the Leahy Mall. I, I don't see any point in dumping tons and tons of dirt in there when maybe that money could have been utilized somewhere else. One thing that is bothering me though is originally this started out really simple. Then it kind of got complicated because Council Bluffs was included in there. And now you've got like Heartland of America Park, I believe that was like $500 million for that. And then you've got Lewis and Clark Landing. So there, there hasn't been... So, there hasn't been a real definite, like, is the city also going to pay for Heartland Park? Because then, if they're going to put five hundred million in it, why is the city contributing fifty million? And then, I have no idea how they come up with three million dollars a year maintenance from the city and then three million from donors. I haven't seen how they come up with that figure. How do you justify three, you know, thirty million over ten years for maintenance? So, you know, I mean, if someone can tell me, I would love to know.
There are a lot of numbers there, and usually, we don't answer any questions that come. We'll get you the information if we need to.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. If you get your contact, if we can get your contact information, we'll get that to you. Give it to the clerk, and we'll get that to you.
All right.
Okay?
Do I do that later?
You can do it now, if you like. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I first just wanted to start by saying thank you to our private sector partners that are here today. Virtually everything we've done worthwhile in this city in a large-scale way has been a public-private partnership in the last decade or two, and many of them have included these individuals. I also wanted to recognize, of course, Mr. Stinson and Mr. Bai, but Roger Dixon and Bob Freeman and Diane Durn that was here earlier. We're lucky to have you and your leadership and your passion on this, and we're glad you're retired, so you have the time to do that. But we know from past experience that we're doing this right, and we know that you do things right, and you're taking your time and have done your homework on all these things. And I've done it right in terms of the public engagement on this, too, with so many public hearings and discussions about this plan prior to this day. And really, an amazing amount of money, two hundred and twenty million dollars raised from the private sector and counting. That's a real achievement for any city, let alone a city our size. A couple of follow-up questions. I'll flesh out Mrs. Suds' question a little bit, too. I know she had a phone call in to me today, so I'll kind of ask those questions for her today as well. I think the first is to Mr. Curtis. So, from the city's perspective or city's partnership on this, it is a fifty million dollar commitment in capital funding, which is fifteen million in two thousand nineteen, fifteen million in two thousand twenty, and twenty million in two thousand twenty-one, all of which are funded by lease purchase bonds and therefore would involve no tax increase, right?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. That's correct.
And so, when we talk about the other side of this, the other financial side of it for the city is the maintenance of it. And frequently, that's the most important part of a project like this, is how do you maintain it once it's built in perpetuity to the standards we all want? Mr. Bench, can you talk a little bit about how the three million dollars was put together from the city perspective and then the six million dollars overall in terms of our expectations for maintenance going forward?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. Those numbers have, we started with a basis that we've looked at other parks across the country to figure out what the magnitude of these three parks are going to take to maintain. That's still a work in progress. Those aren't, it's something that, our goal is to use the majority of that money to build up an account that after the ten years, that we will have an abundance of money to be able to make, to ensure to the donors and to the city that it's going to be taken care of. So, that's where the majority of that money's going to go. I know, I don't want to speak for MECA, but I know they have a plan in place, what they're going to start with their employees, and they will start bringing them in when they need them on a needed basis, when things start getting completed. So, the majority of that is still a work in progress, and I know those numbers aren't set in stone yet.
And all those funds will be accounted for separately, right, apart from TD Ameritrade, the CHI Health Center, any other project we're involved with through MECA?
Yes, I do believe that's their plan, is to keep everything separate. This will be, the Riverfront will be completely separate from the ballpark or from the convention center.
And this may be a question for Mr. Curtis, but at one point, I think there was an amendment thought towards this document today to address the three million dollars, only because there was not three million dollars budgeted in two thousand nineteen for the city's contribution to this maintenance fund. And perhaps we should be doing that in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, where that's four, four, and four versus, you know, three, three, and three, and three. Should there be an amendment coming next week, or is this what we have for next week as well?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I believe it's incorporated into this document, and the intention was that the three billion for two thousand nineteen wasn't in our current budget, so we requested that they move it out to a year where we could properly budget for it.
And do we think that requires an amendment to this agreement? I think it does say two thousand nineteen in here.
No, I think the final agreement, and I'm looking to Bob Freeman for a thumbs up, but I think it does have, it has been incorporated into the disagreement.
Okay. And Mr. Freeman, you'd agree with that? All right. Thank you. And also a question either for Mr. Bench or for Mr. Curtis. I think that's an appropriate amount to maintain, will be a huge asset for the city going forward and also includes private money. And I think ramps up over a period of time until it does become a city responsibility in year ten, most likely. But I want to make sure, even in two thousand nineteen, that we're not having a negative impact potentially on our other parks. So, the three million dollars the city would contribute to this fund in nineteen would not take away from current park maintenance to other parks, correct?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. No, it would not. This would be separate from our two thousand and nineteen budget.
And presumably, if making the contribution in nineteen, it's from an excess of general funds or revenues during the year?
I'll refer that to Mr. Curtis.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. So, remember that the way that this document is structured, there is no contribution in two thousand nineteen. The first contribution would be in two thousand twenty.
Okay. I guess I was confused by your former answer on that. So, our first contribution is in two thousand twenty, but the current agreement as written allows for that to happen.
Yes, it's my understanding it has been amended so in the documents that you have seen, or the documents that are available to you, it's been amended, so it's not required until two thousand twenty.
So, then in two thousand twenty, the park's maintenance budget will be about three million dollars more than it currently is right now.
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding. Oh, sorry.
Couple more questions. So, also to Mrs. Suds, I think second question or maybe third question. Mr. Bench, timeline of things starting to happen down there and rationale behind leveling things out, and I think it's important also to talk about the potential impact of trees as things start to happen there. Could you flesh that out a little bit?
Sure. Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. You will see things starting to happen. We're already starting to move planners and some of our existing things. We're working on removing some of the benches and other things that we have down there, some of the easier things to get out of there now. But you'll see a fence go up approximately in about a month and a half, right around March. That's kind of what we're shooting for, to where you would start seeing bigger activity start happening, where trees would come down, and other things to where the project would really start going.
And if there's, well, there will be tree implications, and I've learned from my various other projects, since it's important to talk about this and acknowledge that that will happen, but also to talk about what the plan is for that mitigation. In this instance, there's a lot of ash trees down there, some are in the concrete, in your analysis, many are in bad health. And in any respect, any tree coming down is replaced at least on a one-to-one fashion with a new tree, right?
That is correct. The majority of the street trees, the sycamores along, you know, down Douglas Street, the street trees on Farnham Street, they're all in decline. They're, if you look at them, the main reason why a lot of them are still there is to hold up the existing Christmas lights. So, there's many trees that are in need to come down, and with this project, they will be taken down. But also, we will be planting more trees than we will be taking down. So, in the end, there will be a lot more trees planted than removed.
And replaced for the long term.
Correct.
Last thing I had, and then I'll yield my time, is there's also some impacts to monuments in the current areas, positive impacts from my perspective. There's public art there, of course, too, which is being handled, but some World War Two and World War One monuments, for example, will need to be relocated, and the notion there is to relocate them to Memorial Park. And I believe we're on schedule to do that summer or fall of two thousand nineteen.
That is correct. We're working on the benches. We're working everything on the Gene Leahy Mall currently. That's the first order that we're trying to get taken care of with the public art and with the benches, to find homes for the majority of everything. And then also with the World War Two memorials and the other memorials down at Heartland of America Park, we have a little bit more time because the construction starts a little bit later. But our goal is to have them moved, yes, you're right, to Memorial Park. We have a new area that's going to be just to the east of the Rose Garden. We think it's a beautiful, fitting place for those monuments, and we will start doing that this summer and then later this fall.
Thanks. And to me, that's another benefit of what we're doing here, is that'll really be an image maker and a nice enhanced area in Memorial Park that is a tribute to our veterans in the first place, but will be that much better as a result of this activity as well. So, I look forward to supporting this next week. I want to thank everyone involved for being here and sticking out the afternoon here, but more importantly, for making what we know will be an amazing asset for Omaha for generations to come.
Mr. Harding.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Roger Dixon, I just had a couple of questions, because I think it's obviously a very important component of this agreement, because MECA is one of the parties of the agreement. So, could you briefly describe the role MECA will be playing in this?
Roger Dixon, four-fifty-five North Tenth Street. We basically will be overseeing the construction in coordination with the city, the Downtown Riverfront Trust, and then we go into the management of the park, maintenance of the park, and activation of the park.
That was brief, I guess. Thank you. I just, it was, I thought it was important to make sure that people understood how the three parties of this agreement will be working together. MECA has been, I think, a proven and trusted entity to, has successfully managed city assets before, and I think that was, because of that history and that track record was a great reason to, rather than reinvent any wheels, was to use the tools that we had available. And I think, and I know we've talked before, you've talked before about the hiring process, and if you have, if you want to be brief again, just kind of set that up as to how it will be managed through your office.
Well, it's, we will have, the first onboard employee will be a projects coordinator. She'll work with the Keywood, with HDR, OJB, City Parks Department, and the other committees. And that will be a vice president of parks that will report to me. And then, as time progresses, there may be another person brought on to support this position. But as we get closer to the, you know, the finishing of Gene Leahy Mall, then we'll bring on a few more people to help in the activation and then the maintenance and upkeep of that park. And then it flows from Gene Leahy to Heartland of America Park and then down to Lewis and Clark Landing. So, it's, you know, we'll probably be in the ten to twelve range. Numbers have changed a little bit because different features of the park are changing as we get there. So, it's, and then, you know, we'll do seasonal people, you know, we'll have lawn mowing that we may need to maintain. The irrigation systems will maintain. Landscaping will probably contract out. Snow removal will do, other than in the parking lots, which we will have in our area, we'll contract that out, but then we'll do the walks and pass, probably with our temporary people as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just also publicly, I want to not only, you know, thank again Mr. Stinson and Mr. Bai for all their great work and all the others who have weighed in, but also the people who've done a lot of the heavy lifting day-to-day as well with Bob Freeman and Steve Jensen and Brooke Bench. And I, the future of downtown Omaha is just, it's exciting, and thank you for all your efforts, and we're glad the city can play a minor role in helping you achieve that goal as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Mr. Dixon.
Four-fifty-five North Tenth.
Thank you. My questions shouldn't come as surprise. First, I generally say this is a very exciting project. It's one I support and want to express also my thanks and appreciation to the philanthropic community. But when the project begins, assuming it passes in March and dirt starts flying, literally, there are many people who I represent who live in the downtown area. Downtown area is an important tourist attraction, destination for our city, and there are many businesses there. And so, I want to have a sense communicated in a public way, what you can tell the people of Omaha in the downtown and who will be coming here, who will be actually managing the construction, how will the communications be handled if there's questions, how will the construction be managed in terms of the impacts, in terms of what, if, you know, if it's wet, is there mud that's going to be tracked out of this place? How will these things be cleaned up? Dust, how will that be kept down? Kind of some of the technical things of people who live in that area are asking me as to how they'll be addressed and how they'll know who to contact if they have questions.
Okay, so, the communication aspect of it, working with our communications person, and we brought on Bailey Laraman to assist in that. Will be a website that's, there's currently a website there, but we'll take that and expand that, and I think we're going to have a link to the city site that we can explain what's going on, when it's happening, so there's some information or a lot of information going out. As far as the issue with streets around that, that's part of Keywood's plan, and I know Brooke with his department is also, and we'll have people around to make sure that, you know, if we have an impact, that it's taken care of, so people aren't driving through mud or the dust is controlled and everything. Because I think most of that's going to be impacted when we get into Gene Leahy, which is the first part of the project, because fences will go up sometime in the first part of March, and trees will start coming down in there, and they'll be hauling those trees off. And so, there's, it's going to have an impact on traffic. So, I don't know how many lanes are going to be taken out, if any at all. I think we're still in the process of determining that, but, you know, it's, everybody's going to be communicating, want to make sure we reach out. And I think Councilman Melton had asked the same questions about how we're going to get out. So, that is the name, and who would they contact? They can go to this website and start going. I'm sure they'll still go to the city's hotline, and then hopefully, they'll feed that back to us as well.
So, on the website that you'll have as the construction management team, there'll be a portal or means for citizens with questions to email in directly to you so that their questions can be answered? If they're not finding what they're looking for on the website itself?
Exactly. It's like our information site that we have for CenturyLink Center Omaha. It comes in, it goes to Christina Ingdahl, and then she farms it out to get the answers back to these individuals. That will be the format we will use for the parks.
Well, I really am glad to hear that you'll be doing those things, so people will know when they hear about a four-year construction project, it's something the city's going to be living with for a while, and most immediately in the Gene Leahy Mall, so people will know where to go. Do you know what the website's called yet?
The current website is riverfrontrevitalization.com, but there will be a branding process that will probably change and will redirect.
Okay. So, riverfrontrevitalization.com. That's a long one to type out on, for a poor speller like me.
Well, and that's from HDR, and they set that up. We are going in, that's with the help of Bailey Laraman, we'll get something a little bit user-friendly.
Yeah. All I'm asking for is that there be such a thing, that it be communicated so that people know where to go, who to ask the questions to. The Public Works Department has learned, I think, it's fair to say, over the years when they created their Keep Omaha Moving project website, that people interact with it, they send in their emails, their questions, and they get answers. And that's the big thing for people to know what's coming, what's going on, and if they have concerns, who to get ahold of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Thank you. And, you know, I just wanted to quickly say thank you. Roger, thank you very much for that. That was a good discussion on the marketing. We discussed kind of making it a lot like Keep Omaha Moving, because so many people have liked that. But I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Stinson, Mr. Bai, for coming down and for all the work that you've put into this. I mean, you really had a vision for our downtown area. that you've put into this. I mean, you really had a vision for our downtown area, and you kind of took it to a whole new level that for generations to come are going to enjoy, it really transforming downtown Omaha. So, I just, I want to thank you for the amount of work, efforts that you've put into that, not just in the vision, but then going out and raising the money to do it. So often, in the city of Omaha, the mayor and even council members, people do have these great ideas and great developments and great projects, and they come to us, and it's only going to be $100 million. Now, Amy, go build it, or, you know, Jean, go do it. And it is very difficult, but when we can form public-private partnerships, such as this, where we can issue the bonds, we're not raising people's taxes, yet the benefit we're going to give to the city of Omaha is so great. And so, I just want to thank you for really spending the last year and a half, not rushing it, but doing it right. And I think it proves today, when you see the number of people not opposing, and in fact, I think Ms. Suds isn't necessarily opposing, she just has questions. But we don't have a whole roomful of opponents, because I think the people, the citizens of Omaha were brought into this process. You had multiple meetings, multiple meetings with the public. You really got the buy-in, I think, from the citizens of Omaha, so they knew what this project would do for our city. So, I just want to thank all of you for that and who had a hand in that. And going forward, just keep that in mind. So, thank you very much, and I do look forward to supporting this next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a comment as well. We know the urban core is thriving. There was just always that little something, what is it, what is it? It was that piece of the puzzle that was missing, to me. And this is it. I mean, when you talk about attracting and not only that, retaining workforce and somebody that wants to be in this city and something to look forward to, I mean, CVB has to be licking their chops on this one as far as selling Omaha. This is, this makes it so much easier. So, I just want to say thank you.
Ditto for me, guys. Thank you. There are no more lights? Next item.
Non-action items. Items 82 through 105 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:32.